The normals, but we're trying to accommodate and do the things that we've been asked to do, so you'll notice the different arrangements out here with seating and everything else. I've asked Councilman Scobes to give us an opening prayer.
Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful for this opportunity we have to be able to meet together to direct the affairs of our great city of Spanish Fork. We pray for thy blessing to be upon the citizens of our community, neighboring communities, as well as those throughout our country and across the globe that are suffering from the pressures and panic of coronavirus, as well as those that are facing the health challenges that come about. We're grateful for the safety which we enjoy in our community and pray that we might continue to be blessed as such. Pray that all those that are feeling anxious at this time, their fears might be calmed and abated, that they may be able to find peace, knowing that we live in a great community, knowing that we live in a time and season where medicine and things are readily available in this great country and great community for our benefit. We ask of blessing upon our emergency responders as they come in contact with those that may have the coronavirus, as well as other ailments and other dangers that they might be safe, protected as they go about their work and destinations. We are grateful for all that we have. Ask of blessing to be upon council this evening that our minds might be clear and open to thy direction to be able to lead and guide the affairs of the city. We're grateful for all that we have, and again, thank thee for the blessing we have of living in Spanish Fork. In this we pray in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Last, Councilman Mendon Hall, please pledge allegiance.
The audience, please rise and pledge after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone here that would like to, any public comments, like to address the mayor or the council? You're welcome, all two of you. If not, let's do our council comments. Councilmember Beck.
I just want to report on a couple of the committees I am on. The Miss Spanish Fork pageant has been scheduled at Maple Mountain High School. That will be on Memorial Day weekend. That's the only available date that they could get. So that'll be Saturday night on Memorial Day weekend. And then the library, it is closed for the time being. You can still drop off overdue books. There will be no fines at this time. And all of the programs and events have been canceled. And just, you can check out our website, the city's website, and then there's updates there on that. And U City Council met last Thursday. They had their last meeting and were canceling their service projects for the remainder of March and April as well. So those are my updates.
Great. Thank you. Councilman Scobes.
Mayor, the animal shelter is currently working on its budget. We'll be meeting May 6th, pending any changes in the future, but May 6th to be able to go through and approve that budget. And then the Utah Lake Commission meeting, as well as the Fine Arts Committee meetings, both of those were canceled due to just concerns of the coronavirus and making sure to keep people safe. And so that's all I have.
Great. Councilmen Mendon Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things. First of all, school district, thank you. Thank you for your coordination with us as parents, with the city, and with your students. Parents, we got this. You got this. Moms, you got this. We'll get through this. I know there's some anxiety around there, but you got this. You're better than you think you are. And that's not just to my wife, but everybody that is stepping in for Mr. Scobes for a little bit will be able to not be quite Scobes, but they'll be a close second. So you got this. I gave Tyler a couple pictures of a meeting we had with leadership across the state today. Mayor Niehaus of Moab, Mayor Mendon Hall of Salt Lake City, and Lieutenant Governor Cox. We did a remote meeting with over, well over 100 folks in attendance from all across the state to coordinate the best practices that cities are using all across the state. I will say this because I told Mayor Niehaus and other resort communities that I would remind our residents of this, and you'll see more reminders of this coming out. If you feel that this next couple of weeks is a good time to maybe get away with your family and get some space, the resort communities across the state are asking that you reconsider, that you do shelter in your communities, that you keep to your communities. Think of Moab, a small city of 5,000. Walmart's a couple hours away from them, and their medical facilities are not equipped to take care of a whole lot of people should there be spread of the virus down there. So make sure that you're cognizant of that. If you think this is the time to get away to some small place, they do not have the capacity in a place like that. So please remember that. To go on to that and discussion with the Lieutenant Governor, we do, obviously, this is something that all of us already know, but we do live in the greatest nation in the world, the greatest state in the nation, and I would say one of the best communities in the state. So if there's any place to get through something like this, I think we're right here in it. Again, finally, in the business that I work in, there's two ways that you can own investments. You can be long or you can be short. You can be long stock and own it and be an optimist while still being a realist about what that investment does. Short the stock means that you're hoping, you're a pessimist. You think something's going to happen to that, and you're betting against something. It's been on my mind the last couple of days that, hey, we are long this situation. We are long the virus, if you will. That doesn't mean that we're not realists. That doesn't mean that we're not pragmatists, but that does not mean that we're not optimists either. So let's be optimistic about this and get through it. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Gordon.
Thank you, Mayor. Echo what Mike says. Appreciate all of those that are stepping up and helping out. Seeing a lot of positive stories and a lot of positive things, especially in our neck of the woods where we live. And it's tough. Today I got a phone call from my wife, and I know you've all dreaded this phone call, that you've forgotten to put the garbage out to the curb. The positive takeaway from that, that I told my wife, was the garbage is still coming to pick up our garbage, you know? Despite, you know, a lot of the crazy things that we've seen in the world going on, the garbage collections, you know, are still happening. In terms of the garbage district, the only thing that we have canceled is our Household Hazardous Waste Day event, which was going to be April 11th over at the Provo Mall, which we always have and is always successful. We've suspended that, and we'll have that at another date. And so I'll figure out how to get my garbage taken care of this week and get my wife back in a happier spot, Mayor. That's all I have to report.
Councilman Argal.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. First of all, we had our Sumois Water Meeting, and in that meeting, we approved, we have received approval from, in order to receive some of our U R L S water and also to be able to put some of our strawberry water in the pipe, which will just do a continual flow to our reservoir this summer, which will save us in a lot of pumping costs. And that was something that went through the Sumois Board and is a first for this new U L S water. Also want to thank for those, we had opportunity to go down to Scottsdale to see their airport. As I am on the airport board, as our airport continues to grow and improve, we had the opportunity to go look at Scottsdale, which is an awesome airport. Strictly general airlines come into there, which that's what will be our airport. So as we grow, we have an idea what we maybe want to look at and grow into, and it was a nice experience. We got to fly down in a jet and by one of the members of the board allowed us to use their plane. And we got to see that airport down there and see how it operates and some of the things to hopefully improve our airport looking forward into the future. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. A few of us also went down to St. George a couple of weeks ago for the Parks and Rec Convention. That was a great convention down there. Once again, Spanish Fork leads out on a lot of things as far as parks and recs, as we do with most things in the city. So I just want to do a shout out to our Parks and Rec for the fine leadership that we have out there with the wonderful programs that we have for our youth and adults. And so it's good to see a lot of those people get recognized down there. And I think next year's president is our one and only Bronco, so he'll be leading it like always. The other thing I just wanted to mention that, you know, all of us are, might be a little anxious out there. You know, I just want to let you know that the city is well aware of what's going on. We've been very proactive in trying to stay ahead of this in things that we do. There's one here, you'll see how the seating arrangement goes here at city council. We're doing our spacing and trying not to get too many people together. We've been shutting down certain things temporarily that would have a lot of gathering with a lot of people just to make sure we can follow the guidance that we've been getting from our state leaders and the national leaders, that we might do our part to help curb this virus, get over it. We will get through it. Just use common sense. When you go to the store, just get what you need. You don't need to get a year's supply for the next two weeks or this month. You know, there's plenty of people out there. Example, my daughter, last week, lives up north, calls me, said, Dad, I went to the store, couldn't find any diapers. You know, and she was all panicky and all that. So we went down that next morning and went in, found her some diapers and got it to her. So, you know, there's young parents out there, there's young married couples, and there's also the older people out there that aren't used to this. You're used to just going to the store and getting what they need for that day or that week. And so let's be aware of those people and reach out to them and help them. Be good neighbors. You know, be smart, you know, follow the council. You know, we posted a lot of things online to talk about what we should and shouldn't do. Over the weekend, my wife and I, we went out, walked on the trails, and noticed there's a lot of families out there exercising, taking advantage of the beautiful weather. So go out there and enjoy what you normally would and be conscious of our business owners that have been asked to curtail some of their activities. You can still go through the drive-through, get your food, you know. If a lot of people up here that don't know how to cook, you know, that might still go take care of them and not pointing to anybody. But it's great. And so just stay calm, and we'll get through this. Now, we're going to do something a little different right now. We're going to do Facebook Live for about 10 minutes. We posted on Facebook that people, if they have some questions about this COVID-19 virus, that they can call in and let us take the next 10 minutes and see if we can help answer those questions for you.
I guess me being the first one up here, I don't have to wipe it down, right? Did someone? Thank you, Mayor. Again, I'm Scott Aylott. I'm the Public Information Officer for Spanish Fork City. And before we jump into some of these questions that we have received, again, we want to reiterate to the public that we're doing our best to communicate to you the updates that we receive and often the updates that you're hearing through different news agencies and through other local government agencies. We're posting those on social media, on our Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram pages, as well as on our website. And the easiest way to get to that is spanishfork.org/covid, C-O-V-I-D-19. And we try and have at least one update a day as it pertains to how COVID-19 is affecting Spanish Fork City. So, and we'll continue to do that as this situation continues to evolve. If we don't get to all the questions tonight, we are planning on doing another Facebook Live tomorrow afternoon. Right now, it's tentatively scheduled for 4:00 p.m., and it'll be another Q and A where we can answer your questions pertaining to the situation and how it impacts us here in Spanish Fork. So I'll jump right in. Kind of the first question that we got is from Camille Jensen. She asked, do you anticipate a complete shutdown of our city? And as we look at the numbers and as we get direction from the state, we recognize that the state of Utah, as well as Spanish Fork City, we're about a week behind the spread in other states in the U.S., but our response is about a week ahead of where they were. And so it's hard to see a good comparison here in the country as to what the spread might be like, considering we're a week behind but a week ahead in our response. So we're trying to learn from them, and I think that's why the state is being so proactive in some of the measures that they're taking, so that hopefully we have a different response than what they're seeing in some of the other communities. We'll continue to take direction from the Utah State Health Department, as well as the Utah County Health Department, and the COVID Task Force that was set up by Governor Herbert. So we don't necessarily anticipate a complete shutdown of the city at this point, but again, we'll continue to monitor the situation as we go along. And please, Seth or Tyler, if anyone wants to chime in on any of these, feel free. The next question that we got was from Zolma Farnworth. What does a complete shutdown look like for Spanish Fork? How would expectations be communicated? What would be the process for purchasing things like medicine and food? I highlighted some of the tools that we use to communicate with the public, such as social media, our website. Another tool that we have is our emergency contact tool. It's called Everbridge, which we've used in the past where you can get an email, phone call, or a text message with the emergency updates. So certainly if it got to the point where there were emergency type notifications that needed to go out, we could reach a vast majority of the city using one of those tools. And that's how we would communicate that to the public. In terms of limiting items, a lot of that really isn't the prerogative of the city. Now, we understand a lot of the local retailers are limiting the purchase of items and the quantity of items as part of their policy. And we would expect and anticipate that these businesses will continue to do so. But as far as I understand, that's not really anything that the city would likely get in on in terms of limiting those quantities. Right. As Seth just mentioned, you might not have heard that on the mic. We are in contact with the local general managers for our large grocery stores and club stores and coordinating with them and getting updates from them as to how they're operating. Lisa and Bill Landreth asked, with people getting sent home from work and not getting paid, what options do you have for citizens that are having challenges paying their utility bills? Mayor, if you don't mind taking a minute to talk about this, we've been coordinating with mayor and council on a lot of these issues. And if you could talk a little bit about what we've kind of planned on that.
Right. Yeah, if any of you get sent home or not getting their normal paycheck or finding out that you're going to be short, when you know that immediately, call our utility staff, and we will work something out with you to make sure that we can get you through this period of time, and you won't have to worry. But as soon as you find out that you've been laid off or you're not going to be at work for a couple, three weeks, call us. Call us, call the utility staff. And the girls there will work with you, and they'll set up a plan, and we'll make sure you're taken care of. We want everybody to be taken care of.
Perfect. Thank you, Mayor. Let's see. The username was Sherbol. I don't know your first and last name, but thanks for the question. They asked, are interstates going to be shut down? Will gas stations be closed? Will we have access to groceries? A lot of those questions are really questions for the state and federal government. We, as a city, wouldn't have much to do with interstates being closed or gas stations being closed. President Trump and the White House, they've indicated that, you know, some of these critical infrastructure industries should continue to work. You know, they have a special responsibility to maintain that level of service across the country while also following some of those CDC guidelines. And so again, we wouldn't have much to do about some of those industries there. We spoke a little bit about the groceries a little bit earlier. Celeste Voice, any word on how pregnant people should be isolated? Are they at risk? Again, some of those more questions specific to whether or not you should be tested or anything like that, certainly contact your healthcare provider, and they would have those answers for you. Terry Holdaway, if we work at, say, Macy's, Walmart, Costco, do you think we should be wearing masks and gloves to protect ourselves and the public? I think we certainly would expect and anticipate that your employer would be working with you as employees to meet your needs, look after your safety as you're interacting with the public. So certainly follow the CDC guidelines that are out there in terms of social distancing and washing your hands and not touching your face. But certainly follow and reach out to your employer if you haven't been given any directives in that regard. Looking to see if we have any other questions that have been coming through. Let's see. Adam Keel, do I still need to return my library book if it's due tomorrow? Adam, you can certainly drop it off if you'd like. The drop boxes are still open, and we have staff that are working at the library and retrieving those books. We're actually, with the library, something unique that we're doing is we're kind of putting books into a certain type of quarantine. So as books come in, we're putting them on a shelf for two to three days because there's, it's debatable on how long the virus can live on the surface. And so we're setting those books aside for two to three days, cleaning them off, and then putting them back into circulation. So while you don't have to bring it back tomorrow, we're suspending all late fees at this point. If you're out and about and want to go drop in the drop box, you're certainly welcome to do so. Last question, is there a way to help Intermountain finish their hospital early in case it is needed? Many of the council, I think, in fact, all the council and many staff last week were able to tour the hospital and see their construction progress. As far as I understand, they're planning on being completed this fall still, right? October? Probably not a whole lot of chance that they would be able to expedite that process forward. But good question. Thank you. So again, to wrap up, if you have questions pertaining to your health, certainly reach out to your specific health provider, your doctor. If you have questions for us, reach out to the city, spanishfork.org/covid19, and submit your questions. We'll have another one of these tomorrow on Facebook Live at 4:00 p.m. So thank you, Mayor, council, and residents.
Thanks, Scott. Just want to shout out to Scott there. He's been doing quite a bit in the last couple of weeks here with us, and we sure appreciate all he's doing here. All right, consent items.
Motion to approve the consent items.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Public hearing ordinance ZO2-20 amending the zoning designation and amending the official general plan map of Spanish Fork City for the Quiet Valley General Plan Amendment. Right on cue.
Both of the two ordinances that we have listed in the public hearing section relate to this particular proposal. One is regarding a proposed change to the general plan. The other one has to do with a proposed change to the city's zoning map. So I'm going to start with just kind of some brief background, and then I'll answer whatever questions the council has, maybe before we turn things over to public comment. We've had some conversations with the city council about this property. I think you're aware that the city purchased at least some of the property that's included in what's proposed to be changed tonight. We've talked about it as the gravel pit over the years. It was purchased back in 2006 with the expectation that it would be perhaps a good location for a park. And for whatever reasons, we've determined as a city that that's probably not the best use of the site. And really, the impetus for what we will talk about tonight is the city exploring the possibility of perhaps disposing of that property and selling it for some other use. As we've talked about what might make sense for that property, and when the Planning Commission last reviewed the general plan for this part of the community, it was decided that potentially residential development would make the most sense for that particular site. So relative to the image that we have right here, the property I'm talking about is the gravel pit. It's approximately 50 acres right there. The general plan right now designates that property for medium density development. That would be up to approximately six units to the acre residential development. And the proposal for that property that staff made that went to the Planning Commission, what the DRC recommended happened with that is that the general plan be changed from that medium density designation to high density, which conceivably would allow for up to 12 units to the acre. Also relative to the recommendation that was made for that particular property, right now it's zoned public facilities, at least the majority of it. There's a sliver of property that actually is zoned industrial. It's owned by Rocky Mountain Power, so kind of hand in glove with that property. The Planning Commission recommended that the zoning be changed to R3, which is consistent with the action that they took on the proposed general plan amendment. Now, there are some other properties in the area as well that the city doesn't own, properties immediately north of the subject properties, rather, of the city-owned property. Those properties, like the Rocky Mountain Power property, are currently zoned industrial one. Incidentally, the city's property was zoned industrial one once upon a time as well. That goes back to when the properties were annexed and the city was trying to court a fairly large industrial user to the property. So that industrial zoning that exists in the area just north of the city-owned property has been that way for quite some time. But again, when the general plan was last updated, I think in 2015, the designation of that property was changed from industrial to estate density residential, a new designation that also was created at that time. And the Planning Commission's recommendation relative to that general plan designation was that it remain the same, at least for the time being, with that estate density designation. They recommended that the zoning be changed from industrial to rural residential, and that's the recommendation that they made to you. So just to recap that really quickly. First of all, the Planning Commission's recommendation is simply to change the general plan from medium density to high density residential on the city-owned property. And then relative to zoning, to change the zoning on the city-owned property and a small area that is owned by Rocky Mountain Power, from public facilities and industrial one to R3. R3 is that brown shade there. And then the remainder of the property that's in the city in the area for that zoning be changed from industrial one to rural residential. Their logic with the rural residential designation there has to do with the idea that as a general rule, and in fact, I can't think of a time with respect to residential zoning where it's been different in the last many years, where zoning has been changed in advance of having an actual development proposal to review at the same time. So I'll do my best to try to accurately characterize the Planning Commission's recommendation. I believe that they recommended that the rural residential zone, a zone that we often refer to as a holding zone, something that's temporary, with the idea that that would change when there's an actual development proposal to be reviewed. They did that with the understanding that when there is a development proposal to be reviewed, that's the appropriate time to talk about different zoning. reviewed, that's the appropriate time to talk about different zoning. And that's the Planning Commission's recommendation. I do want to touch on one other thing as well, Tyler, if you can go to the next page. Procedurally, the DRC, that's kind of the starting point relative to recommendations on these things. And the DRC did make a different recommendation to the Planning Commission for them to consider. The DRC's recommendation is at least very heavily influenced by a request that was made by at least some of the property owners of property to the north. And it looks a little bit different than the Planning Commission's recommendation. So first of all, staff recommended for the city-owned property basically exactly what the Planning Commission has recommended, that the general plan be changed to high-density and that the zoning be changed to R3. So nothing different about that. For the properties to the north, they recommended that there be a small area adjacent to the northern boundary of the city property and the railroad tracks to the east, that that be changed from estate-density residential to medium-density residential, with the remaining part staying estate-density residential. And then with a zoning arrangement like we see on this image here, where roughly the area that would be designated medium-density residential be changed from industrial one zoning to R19 zoning and the remaining part being zoned R115. Does that make sense? Maybe just to talk about one other thing relative to the DRC's recommendation, first of all, I think we gave considerable weight to the fact that the property owners to the north, or somebody that at least was representing part of that group, had requested this particular change. And again, in the spirit of what I mentioned a second ago, we don't really like to change the zoning, which gives considerable rights to property owners. It's not something that you can take back as the legislative body for the city. We don't like to do that prematurely. We don't like to do that before we know what a developer's plans are. However, in this case, I think that fact was tempered at least somewhat with the idea of R115 zoning, really granting very limited rights in terms of what somebody could do. We're not talking about a particularly high-density zone. And again, I'll just speak for myself, I don't necessarily see a big downside to granting that particular zoning without having full-fledged development plans in front of us. And I'd almost say the same thing about a swath of R19 zoning that's 260 feet deep. The potential downside of this for the city, I think, is low enough that, again, if that was what the property owners requested, I'm comfortable with that scenario as well. That indeed is what the Development Review Committee recommended happen in this case. So this is a little bit unique in that it comes to you with different recommendations from the DRC and the Planning Commission. Certainly from my perspective, given the role that I play in terms of evaluating land use proposals and understanding what I understand about the development process and the obligations that come with zoning, the rights and different things like that, and the vulnerability that cities enjoy when zoning is given to a property owner and how that impacts a legislative body's ability to make decisions down the road. All of that being understood, personally, I'm comfortable with either of these two scenarios. I would be leery about maybe going a different direction, particularly on the property that the city doesn't own. Indeed, the recommendations that we have made and the Planning Commission has made as well, talking about staff and the Planning Commission, they both involve changing the zoning of the city property. So again, that contradicts what I mentioned earlier, right, about not zoning the property before we have a particular development proposal in hand. However, I think you'll appreciate that we're not overly concerned about the downside that comes with that. You know, if indeed the city moves forward to sell that property, it would certainly be in line with what we've done with other property sales, to be very, very particular about understanding what that sale would result in, what a development would look like, whether a developer is able, whether they have the horsepower, so to speak, to follow through with maybe a proposal that would accompany a purchase of the city-owned property. The scenario is very, very different, is what I'd simply maybe try to illustrate relative to how a piece of property that the city owns from other properties in the area. So that indeed is why I am very comfortable with treating that property from a zoning perspective differently than other properties in the community. So again, two different recommendations. I think as staff, we're certainly comfortable with either one and I genuinely do appreciate the recommendation that the Planning Commission made. I think that is illustrative of the insight that they bring to the table and their ability to look out for what's best for the city.
Good.
On our property and their property, that power line goes through both those properties?
The big power lines. So there are several power lines. The biggest one, the one that runs kind of the whole length of the northeast bench corridor, comes through this particular property, if you can follow the laser pointer there across here, and then it goes due north, kind of along the same line, all the way up.
All the way down.
Through that area that's just east of Maple Mountain High School and Legacy Farms and so forth. There are other power lines that are not insignificant as well that go through that property. There is a very significant water line now that goes through that property. For whatever it's worth, obviously, we're recommending that the city-owned property be upzoned. Conversations that we've had with people over the years that have looked at developing that property have made it very, very clear that to take an old gravel pit that has some very interesting topography at this point, has those different encumbrances going through it, and incidentally, that is very remote from any utilities at this point, power would have to come underneath US 6 to the south, underneath a railroad track. Not a cheap way to extend that utility to the property. The nearest sewer line currently is not far from Maple Mountain High School, if you can kind of picture what that distance is. Water actually might be the easiest utility to get to the property, but yet it's going to be very costly. All of those things taken into account, in my mind, suggest that both the city-owned property and other properties in the area will continue to remain vacant for quite some time unless something changes. And I absolutely believe that changing the zoning of the city-owned property could be a very appropriate catalyst to spur development in that part of the community that otherwise probably will continue to not happen, you know, maybe for another decade or more into the future, so.
Sorry, I also, Chris is not here, but are we not planning to run a PI line to this east end of town through that property?
Coming from the east, in fact, yes. So that's why I say that's probably one of the easier utilities to get to the property, as I understand it. In fact, that might, depending on the timing, that might be a city project that happens in advance of the development of this property.
The plan is also to run a water crossing under Highway 6 at that time because we'll be crossing at the same time. So that's a few years out, two to three.
Thanks, Chris.
Any other questions until we go into public hearing? Okay, we might have some more. This is a public hearing, so I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
I'll move.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Beck, a second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone that'd like to come up and address the mayor and the council on this issue, feel free to come up, state your name and all that fun and how you broke your arm. Oh, no, no need to do that.
Julie Smith with Fieldstone Homes. I had a detached tendon, so I got it reattached. We attended Planning Commission and appreciate Dave Anderson and since then, we've met with Dave between Planning Commission and this meeting. We have, Fieldstone Homes has about 43 acres tied up under contract currently. Part of it in the industrial zone. Okay, part of it in the industrial zone right there and then northeast of it where Salisbury owns some property, we have his property tied up also. When we first got this, our first reaction was that it was very exclusionary, that it was almost a spot zoning, that the city was zoning their property and they were going basically from 12 units to the acre to estate lots, which are basically three units to the acre without any transition. And so we looked at, if you can come up with a general, not our plan, but the city's general zoning map.
Pull it up on here?
Yeah, if you could. So I've been in several meetings, city council and Planning Commission, and I believe one where you had hired somebody to come in and say where you would like commercial property and then they suggested, and then go up towards Sun Rock's property.
Is this where you're?
Yeah, go up, see, zoom out a little bit. Then come to the west, yeah, down in this area right here. Okay, so for instance, there, I've been in several meetings with you and we discussed, okay, we have commercial and then we're going to have higher density and then, you know, medium and then to, you know, so you can see, that's the typical plan. And then we thought, well, let's go, okay, now if you can bring up our plan that I just sent you. So then we thought, okay, what would that look like? And so our company came up with something like this. And in the past, you've seen it's been swaths of property. It's not parcel by parcel. It's kind of like this area, this area, this area, where the city was proposing just their parcel and nothing else. So we kind of came up with this. We thought we could, you know, we're all in favor, by the way, of high-density. When I work at Clyde's, we looked very hard at this piece of property and like Dave said, it had, it was a gravel pit, it had so many easements, it had great issues. We literally cannot get our trucks in and out without bottoming out. So Clyde's walked away from this. So I totally agree. I think this is a great use for the city property and the main purpose, I believe, of doing it is to make it so somebody has the financial ability to bring the sewer down, bring the water, bring the power, which about $3.5 million, I believe, to get utilities to this site. But that being said, the rest of us are going to have to incur those costs also, or those shares of the cost. And so we thought this was a more fair and equitable way of zoning from the estate-density all the way to the high-density. And we presented this at City, I'm sorry, Planning Commission and they thought it was, in my opinion, they thought it was worth taking a look at. And so they rezoned that property that originally had a little yellow backwards L to a transitional till we can come back and present plans to you. I know in the past, the general plan has been amended without any site plans. But when you do do specific zoning, I understand totally what you, you want to know what you're going to get before you zone a piece of property. And we're all for that. We're looking forward to working with Dave and seeing, you know, where we should go with our properties. But at this time, we are happy with the holding zone that was proposed from Planning Commission to give us time to do our homework and come back with some good planning. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to come on and talk about this issue?
I live in the county, right across the street from everything that you guys are talking about.
I'll state your name.
Mark Baum. So I have the single home that has been subject to the city's property right there. We farm it. It's been a farm my entire life. My dad purchased it even before I was born. We would definitely appreciate having the ability to stay on the farming side. I've talked to the developer, the Fieldstone people, and I felt good about their plan and so I would go along with what they're recommending.
Thank you. There you go.
Was the Fieldstone?
Anyone else? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
I'll move.
Oh, second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendehal, a second by Councilman Nargal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any questions, comments?
Was Fieldstone's, that property that you have that you've got, is that to the north, right? I didn't see where you pointed. Okay.
Where that building is on the very north end is that we have that piece tied up. There's 27 acres there. And then we have Great Salisbury's property also under contract.
So farther, so farther north than what we're talking about?
Yeah, just a little bit, yes, yeah, just a little piece of that.
Because that barn is not, that's in the county, correct?
No.
It's on the city boundary.
Come back up to the mic, will you? Oh, so it's on the city limit, sorry.
Yes, it's in the city limit. It's currently zoned industrial.
Okay, all right, there we go.
So incidentally, the city boundary in this area is pretty odd. Everything that you see in color there, so to speak, with the gray and the blue on the north side of US 6, that's in the city. What doesn't appear to be shaded then, as you go from the gravel pit to the west, that is all in the county until you get not far from 2550 East or Spanish Fork Parkway, where those properties then have been annexed. So there's kind of that peninsula of county lands that simply haven't been annexed yet over there.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a quick question, probably for Dave. Did the commission just not know of Fieldstone's desire to have it like that before or when they met?
No, I believe it was somebody else from Fieldstone that presented exactly what Ms. Smith showed just a minute ago.
Oh, okay.
So they did see that in their meeting.
What's on our recommended action page here is what the Planning Commission approved.
Exactly, yes. What they recommended, at least.
Yeah, recommended.
And we need a vote, either what DRC approved or Planning Commission?
Certainly, it's your prerogative to vote however you want. Those are two options. You could do whatever you want.
Or curtain number three.
You certainly could.
Which would be what? Here.
Have to open it to find out.
It sounds like if all, go ahead, Mike, what we're going to say.
Yeah, I move we, A and B are kind of correlated, right? But we have to do a public hearing for both of them?
I don't know, if you have to do a separate public hearing for each, we would ask that you do separate motions for both.
Yeah, we combine in the same public hearing, but separate motions, we get.
Okay, so my first motion, I move to approve ordinance Z02-20 amending the zoning designation and amending the official general plan map of Spanish Fork City for the Quiet Valley General Plan Amendment.
Second.
I didn't say that?
That's what he just did.
That is what he just did. Z02-20 amending the general plan.
I could have went this last, let me say it again.
First, you got it right here.
Better, I think, Mike.
I'm move to approve ordinance number Z02-20, amending the zoning designation.
Okay, that's the problem.
Okay, so let me go this way. I move to approve, let's see, I move to amend the official general plan map of Spanish Fork City for the Quiet Valley General Plan Amendment and move to approve ordinance Z02-20 amending the zoning designation.
Amending the general plan.
That's the problem.
The bottom, though. To pull up this.
Am I do that one first?
No, hit this right here.
Well, on this one or this?
I think the way it's written.
It's written wrong on the.
It's written wrong on the.
So it shouldn't be a Z ordinance?
That's okay. It's amending the general plan, not the zoning designation.
If you just say it without the word zoning, then it's spot-on for A.
Okay, third time's a charm here. Ordinance, I move to approve ordinance number Z02-20 and ordinance changing the zoning designation.
Don't get upset.
Don't say zoning designation, say general plan.
We don't want to.
I apologize.
Yes. Okay. Here, you want to take a stab at it?
Don't give up.
Don't give up. Just like I tell my little leaguers. Just like I tell my little leaguers, just keep swinging, just keep swinging.
I move, we approve ordinance Z zero-two dash twenty, amending the designation and amending the official general plan map of Spanish Fork City for the Quiet Valley General Plan Amendment.
Way to go.
Second. Hey.
Got a motion.
Proud of you.
For not giving up. Motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Gordon, this is a roll call vote. Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Scobes.
Aye.
All right.
We didn't differentiate the public hearing, so we'll go into public hearing for this one.
We did that.
We did say we were combining the two?
Yes.
I didn't hear that, but that's okay.
We just went to public hearing, but we covered both items in that public hearing.
So I didn't understand, so did we get zoned rural residential?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So now we're, now we're on ordinance Z O three dash twenty, amending the zoning designation and amending the official zoning map of Spanish Fork for the Quiet Valley Zone, is that right? Okay, that's what we're talking about now.
You get somebody else.
I think you have the hearing, so I'm just getting word up for the next item, that's it.
You think what? Oh.
Ignore me, sorry, any discussion, putting in.
Okay, so this is a public hearing on this one?
With the confusion, I think it would be appropriate.
Or a discussion.
I move we go into public hearing.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Mendenhall, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are in a public hearing, anyone wanna talk about this?
I move we go out of public hearing.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Gordon, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, any questions on this?
I have a comment, I like curtain B with DRC, where there's the little buffer of medium density, is that how you would word that, it would be higher, medium, and then estate?
Talking more like this?
Right, is that the DRC recommendation?
No, it's different, yes.
Yes.
You're talking DRC or Planning Commission?
DRC.
Yes, that one, is that DRC recommendation?
Correct, just with different zoning on the properties north of the city property, being a combination of R one fifteen and R one nine, rather than that holding zone. The difference, I think, is really philosophical in what do you wanna do with the zone, do you wanna give the land the zone today without any plans in front of you, considering how that property might develop with the different landowners and what they plan to do, types, et cetera? Once you give that zoning designation, you really don't have any more opportunities to tell them you wanna see it look this way or that way before you let that legislative decision go. The DRC said, that was our recommendation as a DRC, again, the Planning Commission, as Dave described, said we'd rather have it be zoned rural residential to give us one more chance to review a plan. So it's really just a philosophical discussion of whether or not you wanna give that legislative designation of the actual useful zone, or do you wanna give it one more step required? And Julie, my guess is Julie would say she would love to have some kind of a zone, rather than the holding zone, but she also said she was okay with the holding zone because they're probably working on some of the plan.
Okay.
Is that fair to say?
Yeah, they don't like.
Oh, they don't like this plan, okay, so they, there you go.
Although whether you have the holding zone or you have these specific zones, a landowner could, could, could apply for a zone change at any point anyway, though, couldn't they?
I think that really is partly why the Planning Commission made the recommendation that they did, there still's a process that an applicant's gonna have to go through, not that zoning is a formality or anything, but when somebody has developed plans and that sort of a thing, they typically go hand in glove, and it's just one step in a process rather than two distinct things, so, and yes, an applicant, a property owner could request that zoning be changed at any time. All right. And with that, I would make a motion to approve ordinance number Z zero-three dash twenty, amending the zoning designation, amending the official zoning map of Spanish Fork City for the Quiet Valley Zone change.
Second.
Did I miss that up?
Is that good?
To RR for some, and R three for the other, is that how you want me to say it? Okay.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilmember Beck, this also is a roll call vote, Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Scobes.
Aye.
Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Those two pass. All right, new business, amending the preliminary plat for Ridge Townhomes.
East of the neighborhood Walmart, over on Spanish Fork Parkway, the townhome development, it kinda wraps around the LDS facility there, on, again, the east side of twenty-five fifty east, a project that's been under construction for a few years. This proposal would simply allow the developer to rearrange the units, so this does not involve increasing the overall number of townhomes that could be built in that home, but for example, when they built this particular phase right here, this is one of the earlier phases, they actually constructed fewer homes there than what the current preliminary plat calls for, they'd like to have the ability to relocate those homes elsewhere in the project over here, and that's really what this is all about, is just that rearrangement. With the change that's proposed tonight approved, then we would move forward with the applicant on the approval of individual phases in this area, so they could finish the project the way that you see it outlined here. Last thing that I'll mention shortly is that we do anticipate this project probably coming back to you again in the next few months, as we understand the applicant would like to expand the development, maybe add another product, do some different things like that, perhaps around the fire station, he has acquired land to be able to do that, and honestly, we're kind of excited about that prospect and just having this development, again, maybe have a different type of housing type and be a bigger part of the community over there, so don't be surprised when that's maybe on an agenda here shortly.
Are, 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 my gosh, are all of these three stories the same, these same, same type of building, yes?
That's my understanding, so if I'm wrong about that, I'll let.
Yes, he's nodding, yes.
What about these here?
These are two stories.
Okay.
Which, incidentally, that was one of the conditions of approval essentially, was that these be limited to two stories in height, so right now, they're essentially two different townhome, I say products and housing types, two different designs in the project, it's everything but these, and those are distinct, being shorter, a little different layout.
And why is that?
A homeowner, the halls, do they reside east or west of you, I can't remember.
West.
They're west, so they were pretty vocal, understandably so, they were concerned about having a three-story wall right here with their home being right there, so something of a compromise when the preliminary plat was originally approved involved limiting the height of these structures to two stories, and honestly, I think that's, that's worked out fairly well.
Any other questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we go into a public hearing?
No, this is new business.
Oh dang.
Nice try, though.
If you're just trying to make Mike feel better, Stacy, it's.
Thank you, no, you both messed up, thank you.
I didn't mess up, no, I didn't.
On the record.
If you have any questions, the applicant is here.
Children, come back.
The applicant's here, if he wants to.
I think we're good.
Can.
All right. You got it, Stacy, or you?
Yeah, let me put my glasses on, I move to approve the amended preliminary plat for Ridge Townhomes.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Beck, a second by Councilman Gordon, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, annexation accepted for further study for Quiet Valley Annexation.
So kinda back out in the area that we started talking about tonight, thirty-four hundred east was realigned by UDOT five, six, seven years ago, something like that, to create a more functional intersection with US Highway six, it used to follow a straight line like this, and it in fact followed that straight line to intersect with US six back when these properties were annexed. So because of that, there is a, an area right here, property's owned by UDOT, they acquired, it's just under three acres here, so that they could realign that intersection and bring the road in perpendicular to US six, but right now, there's a gap of county land between the city-owned property that I talked about a minute ago to the east and the road, and as staff, we don't necessarily like the idea of that gap existing if this property is going to develop. So this is really a precursor step to that property potentially being able to be included with the property to the east when it develops, right now, we're simply asking that the council accept this proposed annexation for further study, it doesn't obligate you ultimately to approve the annexation, but it does start us on a formal path of going through the annexation process. Our staff that has consulted with the property owner, that's UDOT, they've indicated that UDOT is certainly receptive to the idea of having the property annexed, they would like to, it's my understanding, at least divest themselves of the ownership of the road, certainly, they'd like that to be a city street, and frankly, we think that makes the most sense as well, so that dialogue is started, the annexation process probably will take close to three months, and we'd anticipate having ownership issues and different things like that addressed as we go through the process prior to this coming back to you, ultimately to make a decision on whether to annex the property or not.
Any questions, comments? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
I move we approve the Quiet Valley Annexation for Further Study.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Scobes, a second by Councilman Mendenhall, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I'd agree. River Run Townhome Development Agreement.
The agreement has a little bit of heft, as to form, it's very similar to what you've reviewed with other projects before and what you've approved, really our biggest reasons for putting this agreement together, and frankly, it does serve both the purpose for the developer and understanding exactly what the city's committed to do during the life of the development, also, from our perspective, we think it's very, very important to clearly articulate exactly what the developer's obligations are, that's a particular concern for us as staff, as it's not uncommon for these developments to change hands, and having the specific details of the council's approval narrated in this form makes it much easier for us to make sure that the developer's commitments actually happen, again, particularly when projects change hands and as they sometimes take years to be completed, so staff recommends that you approve this agreement.
Any questions, comments? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
I move we approve the River Run Townhomes Development Agreement.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Scobes, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes. Resolution twenty dash oh-six, approving a Bureau of Reclamation Assistance Agreement to help finance replacement water, of water meters.
Okay, we have Jed Otten here from our water division, he was hired a few years back to handle our water metering, and with that, he also has the assignment of water conservation, so he's worked hard on a grant that I'll let him talk to you about, and just wanna give him some kudos for, for all the work that he's done on this.
Howdy.
So just a little background on this grant, this was a grant that we applied for last early summer, it was to kinda continue a program that we'd already been working on, updating about two thousand residential water meters in both the drinking water system and the pressurized irrigation system, just bringing those up to date, giving us the ability to program those to a lower resolution, right now, currently, the majority of our residential meters are programmed to the thousand gallon. For billing, it works great, but for leak detection and water conservation, it doesn't work at all, it's really hard to be able to see those trends, so that's something that I've been really pushing towards since getting hired on, was really updating the system and making it work for us, instead of just being there as kind of a means to, to recoup cost, you know, from, from water use, so. This grant is a grant that we received from Bureau Reclamation, they awarded us, I believe it was August, September, there was some agreement, contract issues that we had to work out, but ultimately, it brings the city around two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, and the total cost that we would end up putting into it is around six, six ninety, so we'd get back about two seventy of that. It'd be to add two hundred and fifty smart controllers to our Rocio smart controller project, kinda keeping that project moving forward, and it'd be to add another around four thousand meters, residential meters, one-inch meters, three-quarter inch meters, to the existing program, you know, maintenance program that we have rolling, so, again, every meter that we would go out and touch, we would either reprogram or install a meter that brings that resolution down to one gallon, and then it also would be used to purchase the census customer portal that gives our residents the ability to be able to see their usage on the daily, you know, it's a, it's a website application that they can go to, they have a sign in, it, you know, it ties any of their meter information to their account, and they can log on whenever they feel like it, and they can check their usage throughout the day, so it kinda helps bring in, bring the residents into some responsibility for water conservation, saying, you know, you're accountable to your water usage and you have the ability to adjust that as needed, so that's gonna go a long way, especially when it comes to, it has charts and graphs that allows them to be able to see that flow, instead of just a bunch of numbers on the bill that's sometimes hard to be able to understand, it's something that they can actually see, so, yeah, and that's, that's really the main gist of what, what the grant's for, you know, there's some, some, like I said, there's some agreement things that we've been working out with Bureau Reclamation, but in the agreement that it is written, we have the ability to request certain time extensions or accommodations that way, so, anyway, oh, it is a grant that's supposed to run through December twenty twenty, yeah, twenty twenty-one, so it'd be a two-year project that we would be working on, and it, it will all be done in-house, so all the water department, water division will all be working on that, so.
Right. Any questions, comments? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I move we approve Resolution twenty dash zero-six, approving a Bureau of Reclamation Assistance Agreement to help finance replacement of water meters.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Scobes, a second by Councilman Mendenhall, this will also be a roll call vote, Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Scobes.
Aye.
Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
That's, thank you, good job, appreciate that. All right, Center Street Widening Guaranteed Max Price Contract.
The Center Street project is, is a very big project, and it has to be done while school is out, and we have Kenny, Tyler Shepard.
Start right now.
With Kenny Seem Construction.
I was gonna say, school's out, let's go for it.
Tyler Shepard's Kenny Seem Construction is here, and he must be living right, because school is out now, a lot earlier than, than even anticipated by anyone, and then, for the first time, and, since I can recall, it seems, we have a project that is coming out. is coming under budget and quite a bit under budget.
See, it is possible.
So anyway, Tyler is living right. Our original budget for this was $8.1 million, and it looks like with this guaranteed maximum price, we'll be right around $7.3 million. And that includes all the purchasing of homes and land and moving, gas pumps and tanks and all of that together. Particularly with this GMP, though, for the construction work, it's just a little above $3.6 million, so.
With contingency.
With contingency. And so we're excited about this. We're excited about this project. We feel like it's very timely with middle school coming. You'll now have sixth graders coming here and being dropped off, and it certainly will be much easier for parents to do so and a lot safer.
Great, thank you. All right, any other, any questions? None, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the Center Street Widening Project Guaranteed Maximum Price.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Lost Generation, HSHBP, ULS Agreement.
Okay, so we just received approval from the Department of Interior to be able to receive 500 acre feet of our ULS water, which we anticipated. What we did not anticipate, but we're really grateful for, is they have also decided to allow us to deliver all of our strawberry water through this same pipe. So we have about 3,300 acre feet of strawberry water, and we're requesting 500 acre feet of ULS water. Our city, our whole city uses about 12,000 acre feet of water. So we're talking about almost a third of our water for the year can now be delivered through this pipe, which will gravity feed into our reservoir. And so we're really excited about that, the power cost savings. It's very clean water coming directly from a fairly clean strata of strawberry reservoir. And so really grateful to them. Originally, their feeling was is only to allow us to deliver an equal amount of non-project water to project water. So we anticipated in our numbers, taking 500 acre feet of ULS water, and ULS stands for Utah Lake System Water, and then 500 acre feet of our strawberry water. But now we'll be able to take all 3,300 acre feet as well as the 500. So this is a great, a great deal for us. But in order to do that and to make sure there weren't any problems with that, we needed to go to Strawberry Water Users Association and form an agreement which would keep them whole for the water that used to go through their power generation, but now would be going through this pipe. And so whatever water that they would have been able to collect revenues from power generation from, we'd just keep them whole on that. And those amounts compared to what we normally pay for water delivery are really not very substantial.
All right, thanks. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion. Motion to approve Lost Generation Strawberry Valley Project ULS Agreement.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Argal, a second by Councilmember Beck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All abilities part guaranteed max price contract. Wow. Wasn't that tabled?
In the memo, it talks about how this guaranteed maximum price is $11,41,111. This price includes the construction costs and landscaping irrigation allowance so that perhaps we can work on these new city crews that we've acquired to do landscaping work, to do some of that work, so.
Wow, that's awesome. You're getting Employee of the Month for being so short like that. I'm not used to it, Chris, thank you. Any questions on this? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve the All Abilities Part Guaranteed Maximum Price Contract.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Beck, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed. Okay, board appointments. I would like to appoint Greg Traynor and Shawna Ornic to the Planning Commission.
Motion to approve the mayor's appointment.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. COVID-19 Proclamation.
Thank you, mayor. So we're going to be making a proclamation this evening to address the COVID-19 virus. It's framed as an emergency declaration. I want to address that a minute. As the governor did, I don't want to panic the residents of our community. As the governor noted, what that designation does is opens the door for federal funding. So we encourage you not to panic, do panic buying, hoard items from the store, as the mayor's already mentioned earlier today. But we do need to make the emergency declaration, one, to open the door for federal, state, other type of assistance, and two, the more pressing matter is we would like to address some temporary regulations for our employees, our city employees. We don't want these to be in the personnel policy because these are temporary. These cover the time while the COVID-19 virus is here. And they will address the self-quarantine, as the CDC and the State Health Department have talked to us about and taught us and encouraged us to follow. This sets the guidelines for that within our city for our employees. And the second item it covers is travel, and that's broken into two segments. Business travel, which we're going to be prohibiting any out-of-state travel, and then we'll restrict in-state travel, subject to approval, and then personal travel. And that's a little more difficult, but the CDC has defined areas where they're most concerned. If we're going into those areas, then this will require some self-quarantining as well. So those are really the pressing matters. Those are just for our employees, so this isn't applicable to everybody. But we do need to get this in place right away for the benefit of our employees. Questions about any of this?
Policies that we've written up are in response to a discussion that we had last Thursday, I think it was last Thursday, where we kind of cobbled together that emergency meeting where we could begin the discussion. Tyler and Kim have spent some time working on some of the ideas and direction that you gave. It's possible that we've got it all perfect, it's possible that we don't. So this isn't meant to be, you know, you got it, and this is, these policies that Tyler's put together. If there's something that we want to talk through, please, let's talk through it.
So let me address a couple of procedural things to kind of pick up on what Seth left off there. You see the last sentence there, that says the council retains the authority to revise, modify, or revoke, make other changes as the situation dictates with action, that such action being effective immediately. That covers the issue Seth just talked about. This is rapidly changing situation. Procedurally, this needs to move a little bit differently. The state law's a little bit interesting the way it reads here in that the chief executive has the authority to make an emergency declaration. That's only good for 30 days. This is probably going to last a little bit longer than that. Only the council can extend that. We had the opportunity tonight to do both, so within this resolution is both the mayor's declaration of the emergency and the council's extending that indefinitely until further action. Either it reads here in C number one, extend until a threat is passed based upon further action from the council. So you're going to determine when that threat is passed for us.
So we'll need to do some kind of an ending resolution?
Right, so somewhere down the road, we'll do another one. Now, procedure then, because the mayor makes a declaration, this is one of those rare instances where, mayor, you will have a vote on this.
What? It's your lucky year!
See, Stacy, you didn't have to do that last time. I finally give a vote.
Funnest council ever, though.
So this doesn't necessarily take a roll call vote, but I did set it up that way because the mayor has, well, I want to note that, because it's his declaration and as the council you're extending that and, you know, making it until you revoke it. Thank you.
You want Tyler to touch on the two types of, if you want him to do that, Tyler can get into more of the detail on the policy.
You want the detail?
Or you want to enact the emergency first?
Well, I like emergencies.
No, whatever you want to do.
Okay. I heard you say the lost generation earlier. I didn't know if you were referring to me and the millennials or...
Tyler, that's you.
Okay.
Lost.
Well, speaking of lost, we don't want to lose any employees to COVID-19. So the policy that we came up with, a lot of what we implemented was what you, your desires were as we had the conversation last Thursday, and that was to try to be as fair as we can with the employees while also doing all that we can to keep them healthy. So the first self-quarantine leave policy, the highlights of that are if you come in contact with someone who has tested positive for COVID-19 within the last 14 days, or if you traveled to an area where COVID-19 was prevalent, then you would be required to self-quarantine for 14 days. And so because we, as the city, are saying, we don't, you know, we want you to stay home so that you can make sure that you're healthy and that nobody else gets infected here at the city, we felt like, and with your direction, that we wanted to give employees some type of relief there. And so if they're off during that 14-day quarantine period, what we're recommending is that they receive up to 40 hours of leave time. So they'd be off for a two-week period. So if we're a full-time employee, that would mean we would give them 40 hours of leave that they could use specifically for this, and then they would have to use their own leave time to make up the other 40 hours in that pay period. So essentially, the city's kicking in half, and they would be required to kick in the other half. Part-time and seasonal employees could receive up to 40 hours of leave as well under this policy. Forty. So let's say they're regularly scheduled to work 10 hours a week, and they have to quarantine for two weeks. So 10 hours the first week, 10 hours the second week, they would receive 20 hours, but you couldn't exceed the 40 hours. And with this, when we wrote this policy, we wanted to make sure that if someone was exposed multiple times, that they weren't receiving some type of unfair advantage, so they cannot exceed receiving 40 hours of this leave time. So that's the self-quarantine policy. If they do actually test positive during that 14-day period, then they are immediately off of that type of leave and would have to use their own sick leave to cover the hours. Any questions on that part of the policy? I guess it's not enough, is, well, you would call it a policy, right? But it's just temporary? And then...
If they're an employee that has the ability to work from home but are quarantined...
That's a great question.
...they can stop their...
I'm glad you asked that. We wrote that into the policy as well, that if they have the ability to work remotely from home, that they're able to, they'll be able to do that instead of having to use any type of leave time. Yeah, any more questions on the self-quarantine part? Travel, as far as work travel goes, I think Junior already hit on this, but no out-of-state travel for any employees. In-state travel would have to be approved through their department director and also through human resources. And then lastly, any personal leave that they take, if they leave the state, when they come back, they'll be required to contact their department director and human resources, who will then verify with CDC's restrictions as far as geographically, where did they travel, how high is the risk that they actually came in contact with somebody that may have COVID-19? And so that's another protection for, we feel like it's a protection for the employees and also for, I guess, the employees they come in contact with and the citizens they come in contact with when they get back. And if it's determined they were in a place where there was a high population of people that were infected, then at that point, we would require that they go on the 14-day quarantine.
Then that would begin with the, if the resolution was approved?
Yes.
Like someone that, does that make sense, my question?
Yeah, so if somebody's already traveled out of state and just got back, then that wouldn't apply to them, it would apply from this point forward. Yeah, good question, Brendan.
Thanks for putting this together so quickly.
Oh, yeah, you're welcome. Kim gets kudos. She did the majority of it, and we appreciate surrounding communities for their input, too. They helped.
The only other question I kind of had was just maybe for chief, and what about our first responders who can't work from home or don't, you know, or maybe ask to go into areas that might be, you know?
Yeah, we've talked about that.
Do you want me to?
Yeah, go ahead and tell them what we've talked about.
So our first responders, they have, there's, from the point that somebody calls and says, I have these types of issues that I'm dealing with, if any of, so dispatch will ask certain questions to see if the people that are calling 911 and that are emergency responders are going into their homes to see if they have any of the symptoms that come with COVID-19. And if they do, so they'll ask a series of questions. If they have any of those symptoms, then first responders, only one first responder will go in to begin with, and they have certain protection, personal protective equipment. They have to wear glasses, mask, and some other things. That's actually been changing as well as to what they should and shouldn't wear as they go in. But there are certain things we're doing to try to protect them and keep them healthy. Do you want to add something, chief?
Yeah, I want to add something, not necessarily on the policy, but maybe just for the citizens that might be listening. So in the event that you feel like you do have some of the symptoms, we request that they get on the telehealth lines and contact them, go through the questions with them. There's, I think, five different things that they're going to look for. And then in the event that they tell them that they are possibly have contracted that virus, for the benefit of all, and if they can, if they are healthy enough to do this, we would prefer that they go to the facility that is requested by the telehealth individual by their personal vehicle and not by our ambulance crew. That way, we don't have an opportunity to infect another, that it's less likely that we'd have our crew of three out for 14 days if they by chance somehow were in a compromising situation and contracted the virus, or possibly contracted the virus and have to quarantine them. So it is true what Tyler's mentioning, if we get called to a scene and we have to go in and do an evaluation, they're going to gear up, only one person's going to go in, a police officer or a rescue fireman will not go in, as we typically do in other situations, but only one person from the crew will go in. And then if there is a transport that is needed, then there will only be one crew member in the back of the van, or the back of the ambulance with the patient. The two other crew members will be in the front of the ambulance. They will be less gowned up than the one in the back, but we will gown up as much as we can to try to prevent any contamination. But again, best-case scenario is they're still healthy enough that they can be transported in their own personal vehicle to the designated spot that the telehealth asks them to travel to.
Perfect.
Thank you, chief.
Any other questions? If not, then I'd entertain a motion.
Well, it's your declaration, and we would take a motion for them to extend that and implement the declaration.
So I...
So we extend the...
Do you get to declare?
I did, okay. I did, okay, so I'm, do I, am I reading the whole thing here, or just?
You can go ahead and do that if you want. No.
Whereas, 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 whereas.
Let's pray this doesn't happen again.
That would be so.
Whereas.
If he had read the whole thing.
All right, just?
What about one through six?
Just because he said that, I am going to read the whole thing here. Now, I am going to declare emergency declaration of the coronavirus 19. Whereas Steve Leifson, the mayor of Spanish Fork, prudent to the authority granted under the Utah Code 53-2A-208, paragraph one, paragraph A, do hereby declare a state of emergency concerning the coronavirus 19, based upon the factual, based in, indicated hereafter and whereas. Oh, this is the whole whereas stuff.
That's the key with the chief to get in.
Yeah, I know.
We got, we got what you meant.
You got it? All right, that's as far as I'm going, because Junior and all is whereas is, I think it's... So I would entertain a motion on that.
Whereas.
Whereas.
Whereas. I move the emergency declaration made by Mayor Leifson here and is hereby extended until the threat from COVID-19 is passed based upon further action from the council.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Menon Hall, a second by Councilman Scoob. This is a roll call vote?
It doesn't need to be, but you have a vote.
It doesn't need to be?
It doesn't.
It doesn't need to be a roll call, okay. Well, we don't need to, then.
But I, I put it that way so we can check your boxes, showing that you have a vote.
Well, then, let's do it. Mayor Leifson, yes. Councilman Argal?
Yes.
Councilmember Beck?
Aye, yes.
Council Gordon?
Aye.
Councilman Menon Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Scoob?
Aye.
That passes. Okay, we can do what we need to do.
So I think a good way to describe it is, we typically go down this road in our policies, and all this does is give us a little bit of shift, and we have a few emergency policies that we'll, we do have already in place that apply across most, well, apply across emergencies and then some specific ones that Tyler has written up. And I imagine there may be some more that come. On the agenda is a, a discussion about more COVID issues, and frankly, I think the council is pretty well up to speed on the things that we're doing, but it has been a lot, a lot of changes and a lot of issues. And really, the best way I can describe it is we're, we're kind of slowing down the wheels of at least the government organizations, of course. Lots of changes are happening in the community while we've been meeting. Governor Herbert has, has made a declaration now that all restaurants are now no longer having people sit inside. And so it seems like every day, there's one or two major changes, and we'll just keep abreast of those, and, and as they apply to our community, as they apply to our functions and operations, we'll make some adjustments and changes. Probably the biggest one I want to say to the council and to the public is, the city is open for business, but it is not business as usual. And that I think is really important. The public needs to know that we are capable of doing all of the things that they need us to do on a regular basis, but some of the things that they may want to do...
Closer to the mic.
Am I getting the flag? Some of the things that they may want us to do are, are not available. So a lot of changes to our parks and recreation activities. Most of our parks and recreation activities have been postponed, certainly for two weeks and maybe for longer, but we'll, we'll take them a little bit at a time. Some of them have been canceled because we know we can't get them in place and deal with them by the time that event would happen. So for example, the Pizza Factory Tournament, which is a, a highlight activity, first part of April, that has been canceled because as, as our recreation staff can see the timeline unfolding, they just can't make it work with this. And so they, they looked at postponing it, but there really aren't good places to insert it with all of the other tournaments that happen and other things that begin competing for team time. So we encourage residents to go to our website. We've got a great website, and while I'm talking here, maybe Tyler can pull it up, just on the city's website. I think residents can get a lot of information there. People will ask on Facebook, what about this? What about that? We, we invite you to go to the city's website, they're on the middle-left-hand, below the rotating picture, just a, a COVID-19 update, and all of our updates are there, and they can scroll through them. We're, we're trying to make things be easy to find, such as if you go on our calendar and there was an event, that event should still be there, but it will say canceled. That way, it doesn't just disappear and you're left wondering. And I'm sure we're missing things here and there, and, and we ask the residents, stop right there for a second, Tyler, we ask the residents to let us know if there are things that are wrong, or they do have questions, and we'll do our best to address them. This is a fantastic image, and it's a great story. We posted this, I believe, today on our Facebook page. As residents are trying to get toilet paper and they can't find it, they're finding alternative means. And although things say flushable, they're really not. Toilet paper is the best and really only thing people should flush down the toilet. Flushable wipes are horrible, they don't dissolve like toilet paper does in the, in the sewer pipes. These items flow down the sewer pipes. This is one of my favorite things that I'm willing to talk about, right sewage?
It's pretty good.
It's amazing. But I got the PIO just walked in, he's gonna, he's gonna put a hooker on my neck. Nope, easy step. If you had an image inside the pipes, you could see these flowing down, and they're not breaking up, and any, any block in the line, whether it's a little bit of a lip, a bend, a solid object, that does belong there but hasn't broken up. Another wipe, they just catch on each other, and eventually, one to two to 10 to 100, and you have this ball of whatever, grease, and you have sewer backups. Those are tragically unfortunate and caused by flushable wipes. And so if you don't have toilet paper and are resorting to some alternative mean to use in your bathrooms, there's gotta be a different way, and, and we invite you to, to use social media, such as, I, I know that some garage sale pages and other things are saying, you know, I've got this, you got that, let's trade, let's do a little bit of bartering and find real toilet paper. Great story on our Facebook page, so we invite you to look there. But, and we encourage the residents to follow, to keep up to date with community things. We don't have all the answers. We're not the Health Department, we're not the CDC, but we do, we'll, we'll stay focused on the things that are city-related, community-related. Maybe most important, as I started to say, the city is available and open, but try to get to us maybe a different way. Call us. Pay your utility bill online. All of our permits are accessible online anyways, you can get there through our community development page. On, on our buildings, there are signs that say, before you walk in, are you sure you need to be here? Try calling us, maybe look at our website. If we can help you remotely, we want to, because we want to help protect the public from coming into a public space, we want to protect the employees from unnecessary interactions during these times. And residents might find that that service is great that way, too, and maybe their lives get a little bit enhanced because they don't need to do something in person like they, they may be used to. And so we encourage the public to, to use this here. Do you have any questions maybe that, that have been asked to you, or concerns that you have about what we're, we're trying to do to, to respond to this unique situation?
I should have mentioned it earlier in the kind of a chamber minute, but they've shared out an email to the member businesses, that businesses should receive now as well, especially a restaurant, you know, in our local community, and, and, and all businesses and the economics of what this is, but there is access through the state via the federal government for...
SBA loans.
SBA.
Yeah.
SBA lending at all-time historic low interest rates to keep employees, keep your business running until this subsides and gets through, so make sure everybody is doing that before you throw your hands in the air and say, I can't...
Is that through your bank? Where would you start with that?
There's a, the email that was sent out, you can definitely talk to your bank, they will have quick access to the, to the SBA and the cons act, but the email that was sent out...
Mike, here's the, this isn't very pretty up here, but there's the, the link, www.sba.gov backslash funding dash programs, backslash disaster dash assistance. Is that what you're looking for?
Yep, that's exactly right. Come from Ryan Starks of the Utah's Governor's Office of Economic Development.
Tell you what, we'll put this in one of our next community updates. We'll get that link in there. We knew this would be something that the White House announced about a week ago, and it was just a matter of getting that in place, and that, that took, that happened today.
I guess the advice, that a couple of business contacts that I've had the last couple of days has been, is hey, get on and start navigating this and see what's available before you burn through cash reserves in your business, saying, okay, we're going to keep this going, we're going to keep this going, this nearly free money from the SBA to, to be able to use that money before you use up all your reserves to stay open, so we can continue to patronize you even though it's not in the, you know, inside, so we can come to your drive-up or we can get it delivered to us, or whatever it may be.
One thing that Scott said that I think is important is we are about a week behind the Seattle's and California's, New York's in our exposure, but we're about a week ahead in terms of our response. That's a two-week change, which hopefully will change the trajectory of how it, it interacts here. That is not said with a cavalier attitude of, we don't need to worry. No, 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 no. I think we'll be in a better place because of that, but we have to be strict in, in how we limit our social interactions. I think this room's a good interaction, or a good example. I love how the front row, even in this setting, nobody wants to sit on the front row. Why do we even have a front row? I'll tell you. Because if we didn't have that front row, nobody would be sitting in that front row. But trying to keep distance and, and wash your hands regularly. If you're, if you're ill, stay home, and especially those older, older than 60, definitely, definitely stay home. Any other questions that you may have? All right, it's, it's a lot.
With that, I move we adjourn and go home and be with our families.
Do we have a closed session right now?
No.
Okay, good.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Scoob. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for all you people that came.
I just saw someone post that the movie's closing down tomorrow.